Ladies and gentlemen, the first order of business this evening is a public hearing regarding ordinance number 369, the water rate increase. Is there anyone that wishes to speak either for or against, or have any comments regarding the ordinance 369? Hearing no comments regarding the public hearing, we'll close the public hearing at this point and begin the city council meeting. Jim?
I signed up there. Do you want me to add a couple of questions?
Well, do you want, we had a public hearing for ordinance 369. Is that what you wish to address, or is there something else?
Did I address that?
Sure, sure.
Actually, I came down to call to see the mayor today, but he was out. Anyway, I had a couple of questions about the water rate increase. Maybe you can answer those questions. My, make it simple, my, it's 20%, right? The increase is 20%.
It's actually, it's 15% for commercial and residential rate, and it's 15% increase for minimum meter charge. And if you're in a public service district, it's 24% for any usage over 50,000 gallons.
Well, I'm just a resident. Basically, my water bill runs about $10 a month, the water part, and a little bit less, a little bit more. So it'd be 20% of that, basically, then. But what my question was, my sewage, like everybody else, I guess, is double what my water rate is.
Sewage is calculated on that.
Sewage is 20 now. Is that gonna be, the sewage is gonna increase also?
No, sewage rate does not increase. The sewage rate is based upon the quantity of water that you use, but it doesn't, it's not based upon the dollar amount, it's based upon the number of gallons.
The number of gallons, okay. How did you arrive at the number 20% for residential?
It's a 15% increase for regular rates, and 15% for the meter charge increase, and 24% for 50,000 gallons or over. I think the math in the delta was a little off. Really, basically, we hired an accounting firm, an independent accounting firm, to do an analysis of our finances in our water department. Over the last several years, our financial audit has yielded a result of a negative difference, or continuing negative difference, in cash flow, and that's basically the money that we have in the bank to write the checks, to pay for our personnel, to pay for any operational expenses. And that continues to go down throughout the year. So that was really our main concern. And doing their study, if you don't mind, Rich.
Sure.
One of our analysis, just to kind of give you an example, there were four major industries within the city of Buchanan back in 2008 and '09. Jane &amp; Eagle, St. Obane, or Corehart, St. Joe Landry, and Coastal Lumber. Those four industries combined were bringing the city an annual revenue of about 206, almost $207,000. The next year in 2009 and '10, Coastal Lumber was actually out of the city of Buchanan, no longer operated, and there were some reductions in usage for the other three. That result was $155,000. And again, during this period of time, the cost of doing business, chemical costs, treatment costs, kept going up within the water department. And by current time, we actually had, Jane &amp; Eagle, St. Joe Landry, and Coastal Lumber are now gone. St. Obane or Corehart has done water conservation approaches and has actually reduced their usage. Our annual revenue now is about $83,000. So in two years, it went from 207,000 to 83,000.
207,000 to 83,000?
Correct.
Revenue, as for the water system?
Those are just for those four industries themselves. 207 to 83, roughly, close to 84.
Was there any increase in residents or other businesses that helped offset that?
Those actually remained stagnant and did not increase. However, PSDs did increase. A couple of the PSDs customers did increase their revenue. So when we looked at the total picture and the cost of, again, doing business, going up with chemical costs, EPA regulations, retention of employees, those all had a continuing impact on our budget. We kept having to incur those expenses, but our revenue was still going down. And partially, that's just a snapshot of some of the industries that we lost that had some major significant impacts on our revenue. And again, over that period of time, we continued to lose cash.
So this revenue stays within the water department, sewage department, utilities, what you call utilities?
This revenue just stays within the water department.
So you're telling me that this increase then is to help offset the losses you've encumbered there as these businesses have left and cut back their water usage and stuff like that?
Yes, and the general cost of doing business continues to escalate at a higher percentage rate than the revenue that we're taking in.
So those businesses that are left, and of course, citizens like myself are being assessed in this rate increase.
All of that, again, plays a total impact on our revenue and our expenses, and our revenues are not meeting the growth at substantial rate that our expenses are incurring in our department.
Okay. Rich, one more, back to the back question you said there. If my water usage remains the same gallon-wise, then my sewage rate is not gonna increase proportionally.
That's correct.
There's a formula, I guess, set that, basically, your sewage is double what your water is about.
No, it's not.
At least mine is.
Well, that may be true, but sewer rates are separate. There's also rate studies that are done for the sewage department.
Okay, I thought the sewage rate depended on the amount of water used.
On the gallons, yes.
Just on the gallon, so.
So, I mean, it is a separate rate.
So I'm gonna see an increase then in my water rate, but not the sewage. Am I reading that right?
That's correct.
Only if you use more gallons of water.
Right. Right. I mean, if you used, say, I typically use 4,000 gallons a month. So if my water consumption in one month is 4,000 gallons before the rate increase, and $4,000, 4,000 gallons after the rate increase, the sewage portion of that bill will be the same. The only difference would be in the water portion of the bill, which is probably relatively small compared to the sewage.
Okay, what about the fact now we, I went to, we annexed Walmart and Lowe's, and now the microtels out there, which brings the city additional revenue, I guess, doesn't it?
Mm-hmm.
And, is that, are those monies used for utilities in any way, shape, or form?
Cannot co-mingle revenues brought in through, like, for example, B&amp;O tax brought in through Walmart, cannot go and mingle in exactly with utilities. They're two separate.
Not even with council's approval or the move money?
No.
Is that state statute, or what is that?
Right, they're a separate legal entity. The water system is one organization. Santeri Sewer would be another, and so on. You can't move funds from one to the other.
Well, I wouldn't have come out, if I'd have found the mayor, I probably wouldn't have had to come in tonight. I just wanted to get that cleared up.
I do want to state one thing. This is through the West Virginia Public Service Commission, and this was actually a, they have a water utility cost ranking, and this was released in October 12 of 2012. I believe this is available online if you want to.
So they have to approve this rate?
That's correct.
Have they approved it already?
No, this is the process.
The council will approve it, then I'll go in front of them, and they will say yea or nay on your.
That's correct. But I want to get back to this, just for record. This is based off of an average of 4,000 gallons used. It highlights over 500 PSDs or water, private and public water systems within the state of West Virginia. Currently, Buchanan, based off of 4,000 gallon usage, is showing the average bill for 4,000 gallons just in water is $16.32. With this increase, that'll go to $18.76.
Yeah, I can live with a couple bucks.
And that's just water. Now, if you look at the city of Elkins, the city of Elkins is at $26.78. Clarksburg is at 29.04. Bridgeport, 31.61. City of Phillips is 38.96. And those are just kind of in our tri-county area. And so basically, I think Buchanan came in at 42 or something. I think this is gonna put us up to maybe 50.
40, so we're competitive there.
Actually, we're even more than competitive. We actually have lower rates than a lot of municipalities and PSDs.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Mr. Clemens, one other facet that I would observe to sort of chime in with Mr. Dawson. This is the second water increase since 1984, 28 years. The Public Service Commission, the body that regulates us, recommends that we do increases with our utilities every two or three years. So Buchanan's water system has been excellently managed to keep the, among the lowest rates in the state. Two increases in 28 years is unheard of.
Any other comments or questions?
I will, I do want to add something else. Included in this analysis, our water treatment plant, this isn't just exactly about going to offset revenues with our expenses. There's several things that need to be addressed with the water plant over the next few years as far as capital improvements. Our plan is about what, Tom, 20, 30 years old?
28 years old.
28 years old. So we need to look at some wear and deterioration in our plant, and some upgrades, and doing different things with filtration systems, and set basing tanks.
Is this increase gonna cover that, you think, then?
Some of this increase is included in some of that for our debt service to go and do some capital projects instead of, you know, if we have a project, I think it's based off of a million dollars. We're looking at a Victoria Hill water tank replacement, and that's expensive to do some of the stuff to provide the water to our citizens and to provide the service delivery for our PSDs, and not incur all of that onto our debt service. This is also included in the rate to do some of those long-term capital improvement projects for our water department.
Another argument, a favor back some time ago about the deterioration of that system, and it was old and aged and needed upgrade, and most people thought, well, okay, here comes a big raise, some kind of taxation to favor that thing.
So we've tried to look, we've tried to look three to five years out on this at kind of a snapshot of what major improvements are we going to have to do at the water plant without a complete plant overhaul? So some of this increase will cover some of that debt service that we'll have to do to make some of those improvements.
Did I read somewhere EPA was questioning some of your praxis here, or not praxis, but the condition of the facility or maybe the plant, something like that? Somebody was, is there another oversight organization that?
It's Department of Environment. Department of Environmental Protection, and we have our chief plant operator back here, Tom, laying this up. To my knowledge, we're not in any issues with DEP or anything at this time.
Well, we had some issues with the sewer.
Yeah.
That they're saying the flow that we're putting into the system, we have overregulation right now in a lot of areas. And aren't we in a, they don't, we have some litigation going on regarding that right now?
I defer to Mr. Ludlow to explain the particulars about that.
Because that's maybe where he got the impression.
It's an administrative agency matter. It's more administrative law than it is litigative. We're not going through the court system, but we've taken exception with some findings made by the state. And it's not findings, really, it's more of, as part of our ensuing five-year permit to run our sewer operations, they're tightening up more than they ever have before on certain things that are, the affluence that are put out by the plant, so.
But maybe that's where he got the impression about the water, because that was.
To my knowledge, my 30 years as town attorney now, I've never recalled any issue ever raised by any state or federal agency concerning Buchanan's water. We're consistently recognized as the best water producer in the state.
And building upon that, with DEP, there's certain regulations as far as criteria for our water plant operators, certain size of our plant, certain capacity, certain gallons of what we produce, mandate that we have certain certifications of Water 1, 2, 3, and 4, and we have to maintain those along with our plant size and our licensure. And to be quite honest with you, there's a water treatment plant operator shortage in the state of West Virginia. If you're into that business, you can pretty much kind of write your own ticket. And our compensation that also, we pay our employees, we're a small fish in a very big pond. And so our compensation, even to try to keep retention of those employees, also is a significant cost that we incur as well. If you have a drought period, like, I'm looking at a chemical cost that we had in July of $35,158. Think about that. That's $35,000 for chemical costs to treat that because of the drought we had early in the summer. Now, we can't do anything about droughts or whatever, but that's a significant cost above and beyond what typically we would have a chemical cost. So just, a lot of those factors come into play with this. And we try to, and I think with this analysis, and not to push, 15% does sound like a lot of money, it really does. And when you look at the average, again, what I talked about here, it's not as significant, and we understand what people are going through out there. And I think we still have, and actually, I don't think, I know we have competitive rates, actually even better than our sister cities that we have. So even from an economic development standpoint, we can sit there and say we have some of the lower rates, and we don't have to put that burden on, on, or on our residents especially. And our PSDs are growing at a significant increase, way more than what we are here in the city of Buchanan. And that shows here with the increase that they're receiving as well. So we're trying to make this as powderball as possible, but still understanding, it's just like when you go to the grocery store, the cost of food is going up, and that's the thing. So basically, with this rate, we're just covering our costs over the next three to five years. Can't really tell you exactly where we're gonna be in the next three to five years. Regulations will play a factor in that. Chemical costs, cost of materials, all of that, just the general cost of doing business is going up so much, and I think you'll find this struggle with a lot of municipalities. But we are in a lot better shape than other municipalities. We just needed to curb our loss of cash that we were having. It wasn't at an alarming rate, but obviously, if you don't pay attention to something, it will, it will add up, and then we'll find ourselves in a deeper pickle and a much more significant increase down the road.
Well, I'm sure a lot of people like me, I retire, I want to fix income, and things are going up, and projected to go even more. I don't know if Obamacare is gonna affect the city or whatever, and on and on and on, the news isn't good every evening on the news.
I understand. I mean, and I'd love to talk to you after the meeting, I'll give you my card, you can follow.
No, I'm satisfied. You've answered my questions, and that's all I want to do.
Okay.
And find out what's going on.
I appreciate you coming out, I really do. Thank you.
Any further comments regarding the water rate increase? Okay, we'll close the public hearing at this point, and I'll call the city council meeting to order. I ask that we begin with a moment of silence. Thank you, and we'll have the pledge of allegiance.
(Chanting) By the Lord, who is with us, in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one is God, invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don't believe we have any Wesleyan students tonight?
They're dental janitors.
Oh, they're dental. Proceeding, Department of Board reports, Michael?
Oh, yeah, blabbing off. But should have in front of you the financial report for general fund ending October 31st, 2012. This is at the quarter-ending portion of our fiscal year. Just advise you, year-to-date revenue, apparently more doesn't want to talk on it, but we had $1,416,813 in 12 cents in revenue for general fund, and expenses are $1,161,067.98. That is a positive net difference in revenues of expenditures of $255,745.14. Currently, we are tracking revenue above our revenue expectations and projections for this budget year, and our expenditures are actually tracking a little less than where we would be at this point in the fiscal year. 44% revenue to 30% expenditure, so all is looking good in general fund this time.
Any questions for Mike? Chief Gregory?
Good evening. I just have to be counsel on a few things. Our new cruisers were beginning to hit the road. They are road-ready. The first one came into service just last Friday. We anticipate the second one tomorrow, and the third sometime next week. As you may recall, we purchased three new cruisers, two to replace aging cruisers, and one to fill in a vacancy. We were one cruiser short. The three new cruisers that we purchased were the Ford Interceptor packages, the SUV version of that. As you recall, Ford outfaced the Crown Victoria as a police model just within the last year, and the Interceptor was the type of vehicle that replaced the Crown Victoria. So we opted to, because of just our experiences with the type of weather around here over the last few years, certainly in the last couple of weeks, to go with the SUV model. And again, those are hitting the streets now as we speak. They've just been getting the emergency equipment and all the other necessary equipment installed on them. We're also, over the next few weeks, couple of months, establishing new partnerships with various agencies. One of the agencies we've been in contact with is the Fusion Center. For those of you that don't know what Fusion Center is, in the post-9/11 world, they began to pop up, and basically, they serve as a, an entity that houses intelligence, folks that see suspicious things. There's an access line to the Fusion Center. Fusion Center is also a liaison with law enforcement agencies on the local, state, and federal level, and they share this intelligence across the board with respective agencies. We have reached out to them. In fact, we've utilized Fusion Center just here recently. We're involved in an investigation that involved fraudulent activities with cell phones, and the activities took place everywhere between here, Virginia, and stemming up to New York City. And the individuals involved were foreign nationals. So to establish their identities, the Fusion Center will certainly help, help put us in contact with other agencies, particularly the New York agencies. So through this contact that we made through this investigation, the Fusion Centers have what's known as a liaison program. Basically, how that works is you assign an officer from your agency to serve as a liaison. It's, in terms of financial commitment, it's nothing on the city sign. Their commitment is that they will train our officers, a three-day training in the intelligence that they handle, and they will supply the agency with equipment to further these intelligence activities. It's, that's the first step. The second is it's a wonderful networking opportunity. There are several agencies throughout West Virginia that have what's known as Fusion Liaison Officers. And again, it's a wonderful networking opportunity throughout your region, throughout your state, and beyond. So we have opted to assign one of our officers as a Fusion Liaison Officer. And again, our only commitment away from, away from the department is the three days that he'll train up in Morgantown. The target date is the middle of March of next year. So if he'll attend that training, come back, we'll have access to their equipment, and as well as their intelligence and the networking through other agencies. So I thought it was a win-win for the police department and the community to have that kind of partnership established. So that's something that we're moving towards. Another partnership that we're working on establishing is with the FBI Center up in Clarksburg. One of our volunteers, and you guys have heard me talk about, the volunteers that we have through Wesleyan College, through the scholarship programs there. Caitlin Brown is just a wonderful volunteer, been a wonderful asset for the police department, has helped out on a number of our programs, been very instrumental with a number of our programs. Both of her parents actually work at the FBI Center, and she has put us in contact with them, and we have a meeting established with them in mid-December. And through this meeting, we're going to discuss partnerships in terms of assistance in investigations and assistance with our training and community outreach. So we look forward to seeing what all we can learn there and broadening the scope of the things that we do here in the Buchanan Police Department. The final thing I have for counsel tonight is, you guys will also recall, probably about a month or two ago, I spoke about our application to AAA. Annually, AAA has an awards program, and basically, in essence, we, through this application that we submit for this program, it becomes in terms an annual report of our highway safety efforts. These statistics and the information that we provide in this report to AAA each year isn't just the enforcement efforts, highway safety-related that the Buchanan Police Department's involved in throughout the year, but it's also the other projects that we're involved in, our bike patrol, a lot of our sidewalk and street improvements. So we take a totality approach, look at highway safety in general in the city of Buchanan. Each year, as a result of the information that the agency supplied to AAA, they award department stats that make this application. And the awards range everywhere from commendation, which is just a certificate and acknowledgement that you're doing something, from bronze, silver, and gold, and they escalate in terms of how much you're doing. And the top award is the platinum award. And the platinum award is recognition of not only are you focusing on highway safety-related issues throughout your community, but you're making marked improvements over a three-year period. And we focus on such things as DUI enforcements, the fatality rate, pedestrian safety. Those type of things are noted over a time span. And I'm happy to announce, just this past Tuesday, AAA had its awards banquet, and I'm always gonna show a tail. We were, again, awarded the platinum award, the highest such award that, and again, this is a national award, so this occurs all throughout the United States. We were awarded the platinum award for our highway safety efforts and our concentration on many of the issues over a time span, three years and beyond. I will note that this is the ninth year in a row that we've received this award from AAA. So I think that says a lot of our safe streets and our community. That's all I have, unless there are questions.
Questions for Matt? No? Congratulations. Thank you. Sam Ludlow, City Engineer?
Report on the sanitary board meeting, which was held this afternoon. And as already has been noted here, one of the items on our agenda was continued discussion of our appeal relative to our operating permit, our NPDS permit. And just to note, we have a very good operation with our sewage treatment plant. We regularly satisfy the requirements that we have had, our concerns, and we've had these concerns for a number of permit cycles, which are generally on a five-year turnaround. There are several parameters that they impose limits or requirements on us that are really not part of what was ever intended with the treatment plant that we have. They basically fall into three categories that we have concerns about. One is what's identified as toxic pollutants, which are primarily heavy metals. Some industrial plants are oriented toward removing heavy metals, but we have a biological-type treatment plant, and just was never intended to remove those kinds of pollutants. We have very few in our system. There are two that are targeted in this permit cycle, copper and zinc. The levels are established by aquatic microorganisms, not by people. Drinking water standards are many times higher than our effluent from the sewage treatment Zinc has been a continuing issue for several years, and we've Zinc has been a continuing issue for several years, and we've done quite a bit of research on it. There's zinc in many household products. You're catching a cold, you take Kobe's, which is a high-zinc tablet. Much higher concentrations than probably what we're discharging. So it's a medicine that's helpful to us as people, but legitimately so is a concern in the river. But they evaluate this based on the seven days of low flow that occurs every 10 years. So we're being given these limits that occur every 10 years and which our plant was never intended to deal with and are at just extraordinary low levels. And if you attempted to treat the wastewater, you could be talking multi-millions of dollars to take out a few parts per billion of these parameters that really only have an impact every 10 years. So we have a number of issues at the plant. We have operating and maintenance matters. We have equipment that we need to replace. We have sewer lines that we want to upgrade. And we think that this is kind of misguided, that there's a potential to spend a lot of money for very limited impact, where we could much more effectively spend money to accomplish things that have continuous, regular benefit to not only our customers, but certainly the environment as well. So our appeal continues. I work regularly with the law firm, Aqua Law, out of Richmond, Virginia. We've engaged, and they're preparing materials to present to DEP. Our formal hearing is scheduled at the present time through December 13th. We've had one negotiating session with DEP. It was not particularly fruitful, but we continue to prepare information to submit to DEP to hopefully persuade them that some of these limits are not meaningful. We also had some discussion about the Sandy, the hurricane. We lost power briefly at the treatment plant, probably about a day and a half. We do have auxiliary power, but it doesn't provide power for a lot of the equipment in the plant. There are selected items, our UV system and our control building does have auxiliary power. We have auxiliary power in a number of our pump stations and portable generators that we take around to some of the others as needed. So we spent a good bit of that week having people refuel generators or go out to pump down pump stations. We had spent a lot of time the week before the storm on Mark Avenue, an upgrade project for efforts to not only improve service to customers, but to remove extraneous flow from the sewers. It's on a steep wooded hillside, very difficult physical conditions to do work. We'd had some pretty serious problems with the sewers in that area. But they, almost all of the difficult construction on the hillside was completed and the surface restoration was done that week. We had a good fortune. Apparently, there's a new business coming in where the steakhouse was, and we negotiated with them about a relocation of their sewer. And a neighboring customer also was having sewer issues at the same time and provided us an opportunity to upgrade both of those services in a situation that was better for us and the customers as well. We have had a couple of problems at pump stations with pumps. And one of them, we, the three major pump stations, Elias and Vicksburg, which pump to the plant, and East Main, which serves most of downtown Buchanan. We try to maintain a spare pump. In our shop, there are two pumps in each of those pump stations, but we have a spare pump so that if we do have a problem with a pump, we have a pump on hand. And actually, we had just gotten the pump for East Main, having ordered it three months ago. So if it had gone down and then you ordered it, we would have a pretty serious operating problem. Had another crew member go to certification school. Donald Tenney took the Class II certification and passed the test, and will be eligible to get his certification now. And we continue to prepare for hiring another person on our maintenance crew that works out at the plant. We had a person leave about a month ago and are involved in replacing that person. That was all.
Questions for Sam?
Yes, Sam, how does the zinc content compare to the last one done 10 years ago?
They, actually in our permit, the zinc limit in our permit, is that...
Well, you said that this was a 10-year low-water study on the zinc content.
That's how they evaluate the numbers. They have a formula that they...
They do it every 10 years?
No.
Or is it over an average of 10 years or what?
They look back at the historical records of the Buchanan River, which go back into 1915, and they look at what the low, the reoccurring, it's like the 100-year flood reversed. It's instead of the low probability of real high flow, it's that low probability of low flow. And they use seven consecutive days that occurs, the lowest flow that occurs for seven consecutive days every 10 years, or on a 10-year probability, 10%.
Have they narrowed your parameters or constricted your parameters?
Excuse me?
Have they constricted the parameters compared to, I mean, you have new regulations you're trying to deal with, is that true?
Well, yes, this all stems from the Clean Water Act, which was passed in 1972. And the language in that act, that congressional act, is what's being used to, you're not allowed to discharge toxic materials into the nation's waterways in toxic amounts. Well, and somebody's developed the formulas to determine what the toxic amounts are. Not real sure at the levels that are being imposed on us. And the conditions, and that's another argument that we make. They base what happens in these extremely dry conditions, they use that river flow, and then they use the design flow of the sewer plant. Well, under real dry conditions, the discharge from the sewer plant is probably a quarter or a third of the design capacity. So they're comparing two worst-case conditions, which are mutually exclusive, that they don't happen at the same time. So we just don't really think it's real. And I don't think that they do either. I don't think they have any expectation of us spending $5 million to take out two or three parts per billion of copper. But they're pushing us, they're giving us a limit so that if we would have discharged that high, and our normal discharges are not that high anyway, they're borderline. But they want us to do a lot of studies to provide ways, to identify ways that it isn't, we aren't exceeding that number, or that it isn't causing any problem. They don't write the permit that way. They write the permit with giving you a limit. If you don't, that if you exceed the limit, you're in violation, instead of writing the permit that you should do these studies.
So what's the bottom line if we end up in violation one seven-day period in the next 10 years? What happens? Do we get fined?
That's how, well, we have the potential to be fined. One person that was giving a class that I attended that I was questioning about this, and I asked him, "What do you think we should do?" And he said, "Pay the fines." And, you know, pay, and I think this is facetious now, I wouldn't take this too seriously, but, you know, say you get a $25,000 fine every three or four years, and how long do you pay those fines before you've gotten up to $5 or $8 million that you have to pay for facilities? So, I mean, there was some sense in his comment, but I don't think it was serious. That is not the direction that we want to go.
Well, especially if it would be a danger, but if it isn't a danger, you keep on doing what we're doing now, right?
What do they use to test the toxicity of the fluid?
Three times.
Yeah. I know the answer, but this, I thought you ought to share with some of the others.
Staphylococcus, water fleas.
Water fleas.
That's one of the permit requirements that we, we have to collect samples and send them to a lab that does testing. And they grow minnows and these water fleas in our effluent and dilute the effluent to a point where the minnows survive and reproduce, and the water fleas survive and reproduce. And we've always had good survival of both the minnows and the water fleas. And the minnows have reproduced, but there have been occasions that the water fleas have not. And that's, that's another point of our new permit, that they're giving us a limit that we can only dilute our effluent one, well, about three-quarters. And we, the water flea, we have to have reproduction in the water fleas at that dilution, or we're going to be in violation of our permit. And my opinion of it is it's a very valid test system to give you a clue that there may be something that you should be watching in your system. But it doesn't identify any contaminants. It just says that there may be something of concern. But they don't, their permit is not written that you have to investigate or monitor or look for what could be toxic. It's better out than water fleas you produce.
I'd like to know what your real opinion is that you can't stand... God forbid we have any sterile water fleas out there. Well, it's just one example, what's, we have, we have over-regulated our society so much. I believe in clean environment and trying to do what you need to do, but there's a point where you also, it's ridiculous if you get over-regulated. Keep up the good work, Sam.
Thank you. Tom Kelly, who's up?
A lot of work is routine, of course. Three leaks last month, and it was all minor leaks, were service work. One issue we did address was a hydrant on a stony run that was getting hit annually and knocked off, so we moved it, elected to move it after the last hit. We will report that we have completed the hydrant painting, which we have tried to get it all done in one year, and it, you do it on your spare time, but a little chilly, but it's completed. We still got a little bit of color coating, which we're trying to coat for flows. We petodehydrated, see how many gallons a minute on a lot of the hydrants, what they would put out. Just to give you an example, like if it's a light blue hydrant top, then it puts out 1,500 gallon a minute, fully open. Like a green top will give you 1,000 gallons to 1,499 gallons per minute. Orange will give you 500 gallons per minute to 999. And then less than 500 gallons a minute, the top would stay red. And a lot of it's to also help with the fire departments, that they can identify the higher-flow hydrants. If they do have a fire, they can go to call. Especially get a look at the place before, like a green or an orange. And we'll try to stay away from the red as much as possible. We have survived, as Tom and I was talking earlier, another challenge with a storm. We, basically without power, commercial power, it's a plant for three days, but we had generator power. And to our knowledge, it wasn't any of our customers we supply water with, out of water. We maintained some generators at tank sites for our telemetering to relay back signals from, especially a cloud tank in Victoria Hill. Those tank sites got hit pretty hard as far as lines down, different ages like that. So we had different people working overtime and on the weekends trying to maintain the generators to keep signals going back, to give them real time on the tanks. That way it allowed us to know that we didn't have any big leaks out there, because had we not done that, they couldn't have monitored at the plant 24/7 like they do. So I'd like to commend the water operators, well as the line crew. We also tried to assist the PSDs as they needed help, you know, with moving a generator or something occasionally. We've been working on a new signup sheet, Andy, myself, and Michael, try to implement more on the backflow issues, cross connections. When somebody signs up, we do surveys so that we can actually give them an idea of what they need to do as far as cross connection, backflow. Normally, it's nothing, but we need to get it out there on our signup sheet to know what kind of business. But we have a lot of them that tries to, well, they do, they run a business out of our house and certain type of businesses, and they need to have protection. We did open the gate on the dam, on the bypass, right before that storm hit to try to get a draw, where it bypasses around the dam. You know, aid in case, you know, maybe helping some flooding, whether it did or not, but we didn't have no floods. That's about all I have on my...
Questions for Kelly? Thank you. And next up is Denver.
Give you an update on our programs, the Stop the Dew Center. Our basketball program is getting ready to start practices beginning the week after Thanksgiving, start games in January. This year, we're also including grades nine through 12 in our league. Have a lot of interest in this age group, and we're going to try it this year and see how the participation level is. Our Skills Day for basketball will be Saturday at the college from 9 to 1. This is rescheduled from two weeks ago. We had to cancel several things because of power outage. Once again, we'll be hosting the Elts Hoop Shoot on Saturday, December 15th, from 9 to 12. This is something we've been doing for the past couple of years. Our drill team will be participating in the area Christmas parades, including Buchanan, Rock Cave, and the Lewis County Cream, possibly Elkins, we haven't got those details yet. We'll be having a drop-in shop Saturday for the parents to drop their kids off while they go shopping, and we keep their kids warm, have fun... they go shopping, and we keep their kids warm, have fun activities, lunch, arts and craft projects, just some fun stuff for the kids to do while their parents go shopping.
What Saturday is it?
And that is Saturday, December the 15th. Other programs such as Zumba, yoga, karate, kickboxing, going very well, good attendance. Our after-school programs going really well as also. We have approximately 50 kids a day, sometimes more. And currently, this is, these numbers are pretty good, I thought you all might want to know, we have 790 youth involved in the Soccer Dew Center, 118 adults, 117 volunteers. That's all I have.
Questions for Denver?
Okay, thank you. Dave? Mr. Clemmons, most of what I'll take up will be under your new business relative to ordinance 369. A couple of updates. Mayor Davidson received, oh, two weeks ago, a letter from Sutton Lake. We talked about our modest increase of pennies per month on our water. Had a number of people, I know, acquired here at City Hall and with me directly about the expanded basic service increase of 350 a month by Sutton Lake. Expanded basics, like getting close to 100 bucks a month now. There's nothing we can do about it. We cannot regulate TV cable rates. We haven't been able to do that since 1984, when the federal government took that opportunity away from municipalities. We really can't control program. We have developed, unlike any other city in the state of West Virginia, a TV cable board, which is really an opportunity to sort of orchestrate public comment and sharing that with our TV cable provider. But again, as you've heard me say so many times over the years, there's absolutely nothing that we can do to control the rates except by the TV cable.
What are the, what's the possibility of the city purchasing the cable system? Like, I believe Philippi does.
When we did that evaluation back in 1986, at that point in time, the capital investment is going to be in the neighborhood of four or five million dollars to do that. I would guess that if we were to do that, given the advent of, you know, the type of technology, and we're not talking about basic COAX anymore.
Right.
It's probably tenfold that cost. I think you'd be talking a capital investment of 25, 30 million dollars to do a community the size of ours. It would not be cost feasible any longer. I don't know how Philippi continues to manage to do it, except they started it such a long time ago. When we first evaluated in 1985, the prospects of doing a municipal system, Philippi had launched theirs the year before we looked at that, Mr. Pew. I just, as you look at rates, it's easy to beat up on Sutton Lake, but their rates are, they monitor what their sort of competitors do in other places, like Comcast and Time Warner. It's very close to the same as what you would pay in Morbidown or Huntington or Wheeling.
Yes, but we certainly don't have the quality of the programming that they have in those cities either. The programming here with the cable service is just ridiculous. That's why I got off of it. And I would assume that there are other people within the city that are getting off of it, too.
Thinking frankly, with the deregulation in 1984, Congress was to create competition, and that has not happened. It's been a miserable failure. The thinking that you would have two or more competing entities coming into a place like Buchanan, the size of the community of ours, and investing the millions of dollars that would be necessary for infrastructure and the capital costs, it'll never happen. So I'm afraid we're, for now, until technology evolves a little bit more, Mr. Clemmons and I've had some discussions about what's going to happen next. There are those that believe that five, 10 years down the road, that the classic cable company as we think of it today won't continue to operate, that it's on the cusp of being a dinosaur, like the milkman or the iceman or any of those other things that some of us who are old enough to remember those things know about.
Well, it's going to happen eventually, we just don't know what form it's going to take.
Probably what's going to happen, Mr. Thomas, is similar to what Senator McCain was advancing about 10 years ago with the à la carte programming, only the middleman is likely to be cut out. That is to say that ESPN, instead of recognizing that they need Comcast or Sutton Lake or Time Warner to offer their service, it'll come through on your phone line into your home, to your computer. The subscriber will enter into an arrangement with ESPN or the History Channel or American Movie Classics, and you'll just subscribe, enter into a contract with those providers that you seek to do that with. I'm sure that Mr. Kellerman and Mr. Brown with Sutton Lake would rather us not be having those kinds of discussions as to what might take place in the next decade, but their industry's very much aware of it. You can read the literature online about their concerns. But for now, the expanded basics have gone up $3.50 a month, and there's not a darn thing we can do to stop it.
Any other good news?
I'm working almost finished with the William Wymer deed. I think we're at day 28, so sometime first next week, I'll have Mayor Davidson sign that deed and deliver it to Mr. Wymer. I really had to put on the backburner with some other projects the last couple of weeks on our election ordinance, but I do hope to have that to you soon. And again, most of what I'll take up with you will be under your new business. That's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
Questions for Dave? Okay, thank you. Under correspondence, you have a copy of that letter from Sutton Lake, you also have a copy of an email from a couple residents in support of the four-way stop signs on Main Street, and a request which will take up under the consent agenda for donation for the 2013 Strawberry Festival flyer, requested by the CBB Law of Meadows. Which brings us to the consent agenda, which is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 1st, approval of building and wiring permits, approval of payment of bills, and a request for $350 towards the 2013 Strawberry Festival brochure. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that an approval?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion carries?
I give one Rod to carry the day.
All right. He was trying.
I'm still going for the sign we need in here to tell us what we're.
That we're going for, you're building.
Yeah.
All right, that takes us to the second and final reading of ordinance 369. Dave?
Mr. Clemmons, I'm going to read this by caption only. At the outset, there were a couple of typos that were corrected since the last meeting. We actually corrected them on the spot, and they were all with regard to me. It's typical for me to write the previous year's date on checks until about the 1st of April, and I did that relative to this ordinance. So there were three places where we talked about new rates going into effect January 1, 2012, should obviously be January 1, 2013. So I'll read this by caption, and then you all can consider it. This is ordinance number 369 of the City of Buchanan, and ordinance one, amending ordinances number 207, 228, and 342 of the City of Buchanan, and two, specifically establishing new water rates and charges for water distribution services provided by the Water Board of the City of Buchanan. This is the second of the two reading ordinance. If you approve this tonight, we have a number of other documents that we'll need to present to the council and take up. I would deliver the tariff Form 12 notice to newspapers tomorrow, and we would start the post-adoption process early next week. Got to do our first filings with the Public Service Commission to advance their confirmation, ratification of our new rates, which right now are targeted to go into effect on January 1, 2013. It's my recommendation that the council approve on the second of two readings, ordinance 369.
There are motion to approve ordinance 369 on second and final reading.
Aye.
Then I'll second.
Second. Any comments or discussion? Ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Motion's carried.
If I could, the mayor has done a wonderful press release. He doesn't even know about it, but he's done a wonderful press release. This is from Kenneth T. Davidson, mayor and chair of the city's water board, dated today, November 15, 2012. City council's passage and enactment of ordinance number 369 and proposed increase of water rates. Buchanan City Council has approved on second and final reading ordinance number 369 during its regularly scheduled meeting on Thursday, November 15, 2012. The ordinance upon effectuation will increase water rates depending upon customer classification and quantity of water consumption shown in the chart below, from 14% to 24%. However, the average customer rate increase according to and as calculated by independent accountants T. Rick and Bart at P L L C will be 15.31%. The independent accountants, after conducting a comprehensive rate study of Buchanan's water service operations, recommended adoption of the new rates while projecting that the new rates would generate approximately $204,473 in new annual revenues for the city's water board operations. Buchanan has not previously saw a water rate increase since September of 2007, or for more than five years. Pursuant to state law, the new rates may not be made effective for 45 days following the ordinance's passage, that is, January 1, 2013. During the 45-day period, customers may petition the Public Service Commission of West Virginia for redress of any grievances. The rates will automatically go into effect on January 1, 2013, unless 25% of the current 3,962 Buchanan customers serve file a petition, or unless a customer residing outside the corporate limits alleges discrimination between customers within and without the corporate limits, or unless a customer residing within the corporate limits alleges discrimination between customers within and without the corporate limits. Any such petition should be addressed to the Executive Secretary, Public Service Commission of West Virginia, 201 Brook Street, P O Box 812, Charleston, West Virginia, 25323. The precise water rates further shall all be shown and set forth within the legal advertisement sometimes referred to as the post-adoption legal notice, to be published in the Buchanan Record Delta newspaper immediately following the November 15, 2012, adoption of ordinance number 369. A complete copy of the proposed rates, including ordinance number 369 in its entirety, is available to all of our customers, prospective customers or their agents during the regular business hours of Buchanan City Hall located here, or by contacting city administrator Michael Doss by telephone. A copy of the proposed rates also upon the city's filing of the, of its ordinance with the P S A will be available for public inspection at the office of the Secretary of the Public Service Commission in Charleston, West Virginia. And I'm not going to read the chart, because we all know about the rates, but the chart, there's actually three different components to the chart that is attached to the press release. Two of these three are also incorporated in the tariff Form 12, also known as the post-adoption legal notice that I have prepared. You see in the first of the three charts, the current rates, that is, the pre-January 1, 2013 rates, followed by the new rates, okay? That'll be the post-January 1, 2013 rates. And then the P S A requires us to quantify the exact dollar and cent increase, as well as the percentage increase for each customer served. And as you can see, as you go through the chart, the 62-cent increase for 0 to 2,000 gallons of water, that equates to a 14.9% increase. Most of the other increases equate to either 15% or 14%, with the exception of the resale customers, that is, the public service districts, their increase is 24%, as Mr. Doss previously noted. So I'm presenting to our press members who are here this evening copies of the press release, and we also have a number of copies for the council, and Mr. Pew, and let you distribute down the ledger. The post-adoption legal notice will be posted in the floor at City Hall immediately upon the conclusion of this meeting. Mr. Clemmons is also going to make it available on our website, and tomorrow I will deliver the post-adoption notice to the newspapers for publication. And next week, as we get the publisher certificates on the pre-adoption notice, we have one of them, we're waiting for the other, I'll do the preliminary filing with the Public Service Commission. We'll do the final filing with the P S A 30 days from now. All things going smoothly in Charleston, the new rates can be effectuated January 1. Happy to answer any questions, my head.
Any questions for David? Okay, thank you. Brings us to council comments. Dave Thomas?
The, entering the time of the year where we're having Thanksgiving and Christmas and the holiday season and so forth, there's a lot of organizations that could use some volunteer help, whether it's Salvation Army or Parish House or Stockers. As David said, we have a lot of volunteers. But I wanted to get one phone number out, if I could take that liberty, for Salvation Army for bell ringing. You can always use a lot of bell ringers, and it helps, the money stays in Upstate County, which is, which is very needed. And Roberta Lynch, cell phone number 613-7780, if anybody can ring bells. We start either the Friday or the Saturday after Thanksgiving. And last year, we raised about $21,000 in state and the county to help people out that needed help, and if you can do that, that'd be great. Thank you. And I wish everybody a nice Thanksgiving, and don't eat too much.
Sam?
Just same here, want to wish everybody happy Thanksgiving, have a safe and happy holiday.
Tom?
Same, Dave's still part of my thunder there, we mentioned Salvation Army and Parish House in dire need of food donations, especially post-storm. And one thing that we've learned around the college that students have been working to try to drive for is peanut butter, something that all food banks are in desperate shortage of, and it stays on a shelf for a long time, it's pretty healthy and good to use for a lot of things, and so if you, it's expensive, so if you find peanut butter, that's one of the places.
Rod?
I, the bad thing about being on the end down here is that everybody gets the remarks that I've thought of.
It's supposed to start every once in a while.
Yeah, that would be nice. Reminding everybody that I believe there's a Boy Scout food drive going on this weekend, so come Saturday, put some food out on your doorknobs, door handles, and let them collect some, it goes to the, to the local food pantries here. And God bless and have a good Thanksgiving.
Andy? Anything? It's, I think, worth repeating that the organizations, the food pantries and so on are really desperate for items. I mean, I think that comes up frequently, but this year, more so because of the storm, they went through a lot of food, still going through, there's still folks in the county without power. And we need to think about helping out any way we can. It's really a severe need in our community, as well as those communities to the east of us. Anything you're able to do along those lines. And with that, unless there's any final comments, where's your? Jim?
I'll go out of order, not, I was thought of, I was in Lewisburg about a month ago, and they have, been to Lewisburg recently, they have big LED signs on their stoplights. I thought about our traffic thing out here, which I like, I'm able to get through in and out of town a lot easier, I don't know, I've never been here rush hour, but anyway. It says, I get this right, yield to pedestrians and crosswalk, and the thing flips on, now they're regular stoplights, but it flips on there and you can't miss it. I was there daylight and dark, and even in one morning, it was foggy, and those things really, I mean, you couldn't miss them, and they're about, I'd say, three feet or two or three feet deep and eight feet long, maybe, hanging from the cross member. And if you want to check that out, you might check with the city of Lewisburg, if there was some concern about pedestrian crossing out here, you know. And I was really impressed with that, those electronic signs, but I think they're LED, I suppose, really bright, I mean, you can't miss them, I mean, they, they really. I mean, they really get your attention, so there's no excuse for not seeing them.
Thank you.
Yield to pedestrians in crosswalk, I'm sure that's what it said. Anybody else been to Lewisburg recently?
Not recently.
You have, you seen those?
Yeah, I know what you're doing.
Probably expensive, but they're good at job.
Okay, thank you. We stand your ground.